Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Beacon Board of Education. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to a republic which stands one nation, under God, civil, liberty, and justice for all.
Roll call.
Larry Cohen.
Here.
Betsy Dennis.
Here.
Jennifer Edge.
Here.
Christine Galbo.
Here.
Frank Garnett.
Here.
Georgia Patchen.
Here.
Mary Beth Stevens.
Here.
Melissa Thompson.
Here.
Bill Zoff.
Here. Mr. Hubbard, if you would use a fire exit, please.
The fire exits are directly behind the audience in the back to the left and right of the auditorium. And just follow the board out in case there's an emergency.
Okay, no way. Okay, and tonight's workshop, to introduce the participants.
I'm very pleased to introduce our athletic director, Mr. Eric Coach Romarino.
Good evening. It gives me great pleasure to talk about our spring season, which we had a tremendous season, a lot of accomplishments. But first, I'd like to talk about the academic excellence within our athletic program this spring. Seventy-one percent of our athletes were scholar athletes, eighty-five were above average. All eight of our varsity teams earned a New York State Scholar Team Athlete Award, and those teams are the boys track team, the girls track team, boys golf, girls golf, boys tennis, girls lacrosse, baseball, and softball. All those teams won the New York State Scholar Athlete. This is the first time all of our varsity teams in a particular season won that award. And that's a tremendous feat for our program. Throughout the school year, over sixty-seven percent of our athletes were scholar athletes, which again is tremendous. Sixteen of our varsity teams earned a New York State Scholar Athlete Award. In this senior class, nine of the top ten ranked seniors were athletes, and many of them are going on to top-notch schools like Harvard, Boston College, and so on. Our boys golf team is recognized as having the highest GPA with a ninety-four point eight average. And again, tremendous, tremendous effort by our athletes. Again, this can't be done without the effort our athletes put in the classroom, as well as our coaches and teachers working together to emphasize any importance of academics as well as the athletic piece. And they should all be committed to the job they do. The first team I want to talk about is the girls lacrosse program. Four years ago, we started girls lacrosse at the JV level. We went two years at the JV level, and then the last two years, we went varsity. Last year, we tied two teams, two games, but did not win any games. This year, we won four games, and we were in a lot, a lot of close battles throughout the season. For a new program, it's a tremendous job by our coach and by our athletes. Being a relatively new program, it's a very difficult sport to compete at when some of these programs in the area have been going for ten, twenty, thirty years. And so, we're in catch-up mode right now. So, with that said, we did have some good, we had some good athletes. One athlete in particular is going on to play lacrosse in college, and that's Tori Kirk. Tori, come on down. Tori's a tremendous athlete now, and she played lacrosse, she plays soccer. She, again, four years she started as a lacrosse player, and she's going to Wilkes College to play a Division III school to play lacrosse. She was being recruited by Division I Manhattan College for a while, but selected to go with the Division III route, being at Wilkes College. She scored eighty goals this year. So, needless to say, it's a school record. Her section, and she was all-league. Tremendous job, and congratulations. And again, I just want to, for a program just starting, we had the number of girls, it's gaining popularity, the number of girls that are trying out is well, almost thirty, over thirty girls. We actually had to make cuts this year to get to, I think we carried twenty-two or twenty-three girls on the team, which is too many girls, actually. But we had to cut to get to that many. At some point, we're going to need to look at putting in another level of lacrosse. In fact, our girls and the coach put on a clinic at Longbout this past spring, early spring, and we had a tremendous number of seventh and eighth graders wanting to participate in the sport. But it's an upcoming sport, and you can read about it in our newsletter. Speaking of which, I should have started off the presentation with the newsletter. If, this is a newsletter I put out every season, you should have a hard copy. I have a few here. This also can be found online on our website. Go to Athletics. It's the first page of the Athletic page. It's in a PDF. You can download it, you can read it. Some really nice information in there about our athletic program this spring. If you go to the left, you click on newsletters, you can also archive the past newsletters. But it's a really a nice newsletter. The next young lady I want to introduce is Emily Araca. Emily's a junior. She, this is the second year she qualified for the Section One Golf Tournament. And this year, she was in fourteenth place going into the second day of the tournament. And only the top nine go to the state tournament. Unfortunately, she had a day like Tiger Woods, and it didn't fare so well on the second day. But what a tremendous effort she did. First girl to qualify for the sectionals and to make it to the second day of the tournament. Considering that all the girls, or all the, the hotbed for girls golf is down in Westchester where all the country clubs are, that's quite an accomplishment for Emily to have beaten. But she's not in the classroom, she's out at some Dutch, just practicing. She's also an honor student. The girls track team, coached by Mr. Paul Sinene, stand up. DJ's done a tremendous job with the girls team, and Mr. Henry who's walking out the door, he's got a date with his wife for her birthday. But anyway, DJ's done a tremendous job with the team. Participation is up. They went to the league tournament and had a dogfight to the very end. The league meet up at Dover and ended up winning the league championship. And the team was led by a sprinter, Nicole Williams, and a shot putter by the name of Dominique Peterson, who was supposed to be here today.
Not here.
I'd like to just talk about the two athletes that are not here. First, Dominique Peterson. She made her third trip to the New York State Championships. This year, she placed sixth in Division One and eighth overall in the shot put. She's, she was this year's BHS Senior Most Outstanding Athlete, and that's Dominique Another track athlete I'd like to mention is James Brown. He made his second trip to the New York State Championships. He's a high jumper. He placed twenty-fifth at the state championships during the winter. I believe he jumped six-five, but during the weather conditions up at the state meet, he didn't do fare so well. But he'll be back as a sophomore, James Brown. And I'd like to recognize the next league championship team, and that's baseball. The baseball team won its first league championship since 2007. They play probably one of the most tough, most difficult schedules around. They didn't dodge anybody. They beat some very good teams like John J. Eastfiskill, who was the number-one seed in the section this year in Class Double-A. The team ended up losing a heartbreaker against Byron Hills in the semifinals. The team is coached by Mr. Allo, Bob, you can come down, I know you're bashful. Mr. Allo was the Section One Coach of the Year, and well-deserved. Bob puts a tremendous amount of time into his program. Probably one of the first-class programs, not only within our school system, within the county and in the section. He's revered by many, many coaches in the area and many, and many parents in the area. He's produced eight Division One and Two scholarship, baseball scholarship athletes, and numerous baseball players have gone on to play at the college level. He, he works with his athletes year-round, not only with baseball, but in life skills and in the classroom. He does a tremendous job with his athletes, Bob Allo. The team was led by two individuals in particular. One is not here tonight, that's Tony Romanelli. He was the Division, the Dutchess County Picture of the Year, and he also was a preseason All-American, and he's only a sophomore, so we have a lot to look forward to with Tony in the next two years. The next person I want to introduce is Billy Sobelinski. Billy received a baseball scholarship to Hofstra. He's a ninety-plus student, scholar athlete, tremendous, tremendous student in our, in our high school here. He became the eighth baseball player to receive a Division One or Two scholarship, and we wish, wish Billy a lot of luck. He was also all-section, all-league for the past four years. And finally, our section softball team. What a tremendous last two weeks of the, of the spring season to watch the girls softball team compete in the sectionals. It was not only exciting, but to see the following, game after game, we, community members and staff members and board members and everybody going to these games, getting excited about each and every game, and upsetting the number-one seed, and then the number-five seed, and then the number-seven seed to finally win the sectional tournament, an eight-three win over Brewster down in Nanewett. What, it was just, it was just a tremendous two weeks. The last game of the season was a heartbreaker. We went, we drove out to Binghamton, played Maine-Endwell. We were up six, I think, six-one at the time. They came roaring back, and we ended up losing a heartbreaker in the, in the regional, in regional game. But the girls did a tremendous job all season, and it was, and the team was led by Mr. Anilak. Come on down. Ryan, Coach Anilak. He gets the job in, gets the head job in January. He has work cut out for him and to rebuild a team that lost a lot of girls from the previous year. But he had, he did a tremendous job. He had a calming effect on the girls. He got the girls to play as a team, and that was key for all the victories they, they had during the regular season and to take it a step further in the sectional tournament. For his efforts, he was named Coach of the Year. Congratulations, Billy. If any of the girls that are here tonight can say a few words.
Before I do that, I just want to let you know that the final state rankings for softball when they came out this past week, we can hide, hey, last day, we finished ranked number-nine at the state, so it's a very good. Two of the girls from the team were able to be here tonight. We'll start with our senior, who's also a four-year varsity player, and one of our team captains, Chelsea Dexter. Chelsea was our catcher, called all but four innings on the season. They were great during one of the peak skill games. So, the team in home runs, batting average, hits, RBIs, and doubles. So, led our team with the bat, called the game for Kathleen Boyle, our pitcher, who wasn't able to be here tonight, and was named all-league and all-section this year.
Yeah.
And she may find that touching, although you were not. And the other girl that's here tonight is our eighth-grade center fielder, Leandra Eche.
Come here, here.
Leandra was our starting center fielder and leadoff hitter. She was one of the top five in the league in stolen bases this year with twenty-five stolen bases, never got thrown out all season. I mean, a good way to sum up how she played this year was in the section, section championship game, Leandra's a lefty on a ball in centerfield that she caught running towards third base. She turned and gunned the girl out, doubled her off at first base on the fly. Most centerfielders don't make the catch that she made on that play to begin with, let alone double a girl off at first base when their momentum's taken up towards third. And it shows the way she shrunk the field for the other team all season, and set the table all year with her bat, getting on base and being disruptive on the base pass.
Well, I'd just like to add a few things. If you saw any of the sectional games, Chelsea hit a few bombs, a few home runs, they were tremendous shots. And Leandra, when people found out that she was an eighth grader, they were just amazed. She's a tremendous athlete with a lot of potential for the next four years. So, there's a lot of potential, we've got to keep working hard, not only in athletics, but also in the classroom. Thank you, girls. My last presentation is going to my secretary. The Athletic Administrators Association awards a secretary, the Section One Secretary of the Year every, every year. This year, the recipient is Lisa Tompkins. Come on down. Lisa was recognized last week at the Athletic Association's luncheon as Secretary of the Year for Section One. She was also recognized at the State Athletic Association Conference as the Judith Mertens Ex., was it, hold on a second. Judith Mertens Secretary Award of Excellence. At the, in March, she was awarded that. The athletic office is probably one of the most busiest offices in the, in the district with the number of contests and practices and keeping track of coaching certifications and everything else. When you think we're in a lull, we're preparing for the next season. Not many people really know what we do as athletic directors, except other athletic directors and, of course, our secretaries. They're the ones that hold things together for us. Lisa, when I was looking for a secretary twelve years ago, I wanted somebody not only with good secretarial skills, but also somebody that had an understanding of athletics. Buses, practice schedules, contests, things of that nature. And we were able to hire, I was able to hire Lisa. Her husband's a coach, her kids were, were athletes, so she clearly had an understanding of what had to be done in our, in our office. And she has been an asset, not only to me, but because of the communication that she has with other athletic directors when they call or their secretaries, they, they felt that she should be honored as the Secretary of the Year for our section. And on Friday, she received, Friday she received this award, I'd like to just pass it around if I could, and then you can take it over. Well-deserved award. I couldn't do this job without Lisa, and I thank you. And that concludes my presentation. As you can see, I'm very excited about, about our spring season, and I'm looking, really looking forward to the fall for some exciting things to happen.
Thanks, Coach. We're very proud of Lisa and our teams, our coaches. We're very pleased to, we have set aside some time to recognize some very special people at this time, and I'd like to ask Anne Marie Montrone, our business official, to make first impression.
Would you like me to stand?
Well, I'd think so, if you'd like the coach to stand up there.
Can I bring down the retiree with me?
I think that would only be fitting.
Fitting, right. Russell Cunningham started working at the Beacon City School District in the fall of 2001. He was initially hired to run our new high school building. His position quickly grew into more of an assistant to the director of facilities, and he became responsible for much more than just running the high school. Russell worked long hours and never left until everything was taken care of. He had a great working relationship with all of his staff and did an excellent job managing the scheduling, including all the extra activities in the buildings. He is, he is a great behind-the-scenes person that took care of all the small details that no one else thought of. I'm sure Russell will not miss the phone calls in the middle of the night, or the days when he knew he had to get up extra early because there was a big snowstorm coming. He's definitely going to be missed, and we can't thank him enough for all his hard work and dedication to the district over the last ten and a half years. I also have, because Charlie doesn't want to be forgotten, and he's been retired a very short time ago, he sent me something he'd like me to read it on behalf of him as well. Russell came to Beacon City School District as we were finishing the new high school. Russ immediately stepped right in to take charge with behind-the-wall maintenance issues, helping get the new heating, lighting, and other mechanical systems working properly. He was vital to the training of the operations individuals then and to this day. His dedication to keeping all our buildings open, clean, and mechanically working properly is a credit to this man. When I took over facilities in 2006, Russell was my right-hand man, always watching my back and helping with all day-to-day operations. Whatever I asked him to take on, he did, without question, and did it well. His interpersonal relationship skills with our staff helped in every situation, motivating people to complete their tasks. His dedication to detail, record-keeping, and other day-to-day tasks assisted me and helped to always keep things on track. I wish Russell a very healthy, long, and happy retirement, and thank him for all his help and all he has done for the Beacon City School District.
Thanks, Russ. You did a good job for us. Next, I'd like to invite Ms. Gonzalez from JBF down to make a presentation.
Good evening, everyone. Mrs. Christine Evelyn. Mrs. Evelyn worked for Beacon City School District for twenty-nine years. She started working at JV Forestas as a health aide in November of 1983. She continued in that position until the health aides were eliminated at the elementary level and the nurses became full-time. And she then went on to become the attendance secretary. In October of 1996, she became principal secretary and worked in that capacity for sixteen years. She was the principal secretary for Mary Smith, Steve Varelo, and me. Chris, as I reflect on my fondest memories of you, it's hard to name a few because there are so many. I knew that it was meant to be for us to work together, knowing that we both share the same birthday, but not the same year. We made every workday, you made every workday a pleasure for me, and to come to work with you. Your kindness, patience, dedication, and work ethic are qualities that not every individual possesses, but you certainly do. You literally knew where everything was in the school safe, in the files, in the cabinets, in the drawers, and you were able to locate immediately each last person's mailbox. I was so impressed with your skills, although you would say it's just because I've been here so long. Chris, you're truly special, and I feel so grateful to have had the opportunity to work with you. I know that the JV Forestas community will greatly miss you. You will always have a special place in their hearts. I wish you the very best retirement that you well deserved.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll ask our intramunicipal principal, Mr. Hughes, to make a presentation.
This is my friend, Mr. John.
The long and the short of it.
Only known John for ten months, I consider him a friend of mine. He's a wonderful gentleman, he's a true professional, he's very well-respected, and he has a good sense of humor. That's the part of the hero. John started in Beacon in September 1999, teaching math at the old high school. He also taught and developed computer science courses. He transferred to Longbout to teach eighth grade in September 2000. He's been there ever since, and that's our gain. He helped add earth science to the middle school science curriculum. He coordinated the testing schedule for the New York State Science Eight Assessment Exam. He's added the review section for the Science Eight Exam. The exam covers science from grades five through eight. As the RMS Science Coordinator, he ensured that all standards were covered in grades six through eight. He realigned the curriculum in grades six through eight so that student cognitive development matched the standards, and added advanced classes in the seventh and eighth grades. John's eighth-grade Earth Science Regents class has never had a failure. John's going to spend time in the Adirondacks in his beautiful cabin. We wish him the very best, and he will be missed.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. I know how hard a job you have, but you've enabled me to help the kids out in this community, and I really appreciate it, and they do too.
Next, I'd like to invite our favorite high school principal, Dr. Siedman, down to give us a little introduction to our Code of Conduct.
Thank you, Mr. Hilberg. Good evening, everyone. Briefly, let me just review the task of the committee. I was asked to chair a committee of administrators, parents, teachers, and students, first to review the Code of Conduct, but also given the fact that July one brings the introduction of the dignity and fairness act for all. And that will go into of the Dignity and Fairness Act for All, and that will go into effect on the 1st of July. So, essentially, we had two tasks to perform. One was to review the original Code of Conduct, and then two is to fold into that Code of Conduct all the regulations and provisions of the Dignity and Fairness Act. So first, let me acknowledge the committee. From the administration, Mr. Frank Mulhern, Kara Conrad, Juan Gonzalez, Tom O'Neill, Brian Saltish, Eric Romanino. Teachers, Aaron Johnson from the high school, Glenn Morris from the middle school, and Miriam Sariello from the elementary school. And our students in the high school, Stevie Barello, Rachel Bresslauer, and Pamela Gadsden. So, we worked as a committee. Time was short, so we had to define a way to do that. So I divided the work up, first for everyone to read certain sections, and then for all to review the final document. And I must tell you, as a committee, we worked extremely well to get it done in a short period of time, so I'd like to thank the committee for working with me to get the task done. Can't leave out Mr. Lambert. He and I communicated throughout the entire process for his review of the document to make sure that all the Ts and the Is crossed and dotted. And so, what you have in front of you, I think the way that I would like to go through it, is what you have there on the cover sheet that Mr. Hilberg provided to you, is that our work was completed, and what I did simply in these major sections is to give you the citations by page. There's no need for me to review that or for you to... You've read it, okay? But I just want to point out that, for example, under definitions, all those different definitions were added to the Code of Conduct to be in compliance with the Dignity and Fairness Act. And then essential markers, the same thing there. That's language that had to be included, which was not contained in most school districts' Code of Conduct, so that was added to it. And the reporting methods and promoting a safe environment. And very importantly, that as you well know, that every school must appoint a person to serve as the Dignity Act Coordinator, and I'd like to share my thoughts on that in a minute as well. The intent, really, of the Dignity Act for all students, basically, if you want to encapsulate that, is to provide all public school students with an environment that is free from discrimination and harassment, as well as to foster civility in public schools. It also focuses on prevention of harassment and discriminating behaviors through the promotion of educational measures meant to positively impact school culture and climate. Now, also in the conduct, as I'm sure you picked up on this, in the section that is 5300, it talks about prohibited student conduct, and there are many, many, many citations in there of what prohibited student conduct means with respect to harassment and placing students in a situation where they feel unsafe and unwanted. Interestingly enough, I attended a workshop, which was given by the Task Force of the Fairness and Dignity Act, and they will not use the word bully. They'll use the words such as harassment, because their whole tenor, I believe, in their presentation is to be very proactive in developing this environment where kids feel safe and secure. And yes, there are punitive measures associated with it, because in the prohibited student conduct, it spells out quite clearly what happens if students engage in behavior that is discriminatory, harassing, hazing, those kinds of activities. And certainly, there are consequences to that. But I think a very important piece of this legislation is for us to provide training and education, and for youngsters to be able to know what is acceptable and what is not acceptable. So rather, first, it's punitive, be proactive in this. And that leads me to talk a little bit about the Dignity Act Coordinator, which is outlined on page eight, what the duties and responsibilities are. I think, as you well know, I'm one of the subcommittees of the policy committees. There was discussion based on who could be a Dignity Act Coordinator in the buildings, and Mr. Hilberg and I had some conversation about that. And it is our recommendation and feeling that, given what the job entails, because the underlying premise of the Dignity Act is, you know, preventive and non-punitive intervention is the best way to achieve school environments free from harassment and discrimination. We have restorative practice. We do conflict resolution, peer mediation, counseling, rather than overrelying on exclusionary methods of discipline such as suspension. Now, a number of people can assume that role, but in my view, there are certain professional responsibilities where these things smack against one another in the sense of if an investigation is necessary to be done, if you have youngsters that continue to do that and you need to investigate and you need to find out what the positive problem is. Guidance counselors counsel extremely well with kids dealing with harassment and bullying and so forth. Same thing with social workers, and even, you know, the Act could have a teacher appointed that. But I see it as the role of the principal to do that and rely on their school staff to do the things, you know, that are extremely important, you know, in helping youngsters develop the skills required so that we start eliminating that. And that simply still means that if a counselor, or a teacher, or a social worker, if they're dealing with youngsters and they find out that this is going on and it rises to the level of an investigation that needs to be done, then that needs to be then turned over to the principal. And, you know, I feel very strongly about that, because I think that's the best way to handle it. And the overarching issue of this Act is to... Or for schools to promote and to instill and to have an environment where some of these negative things are stopped. And there are many ways to do that. And I think that, you know, the proactive is something, you know, that we really have to look and work hard in every single school building. We have lots of good programs. I think we just need to focus and continue doing more of those things and have some kind of systematic way, starting, you know, with the youngsters in the elementary school working up and to instill those skills with kids. The other point in the document is that this particular work, this document, has to be distributed for all employees in the district, from food service workers to school bus drivers to custodians. Every staff member who's an employee must get this document. And then there must be training for students and staff about the ramifications of this document. And of course, the person who acts as the Training Act or the Dignity Act Coordinator, they have to be trained as well. All right? So that's it in a nutshell. The... This Code of Conduct has already been posted, you know, on the website for people to read. Again, I talked about training of staff and students, and certainly the training of the Dignity Act Coordinator.
I'd like to thank Dr. Seveding for all of his great work. If you need a job done, Dr. Seveding is the person to see it through, and you did it in a timely and most complete fashion. We agree that it is... We don't see this legislation and new College of Conduct as much as an obligation. It's more as an opportunity to move forward and to really evolve and change the climate and culture of our entire district. So once again, I thank you for your leadership and all the committee members for all your fine work. Couldn't have done it without you. And of course, our council, like Lambert, for making sure that we're absolutely perfect with it. At this time, with your permission, as part of the legislation, we'd like to open up any questions, and this will be a public hearing if anyone has any questions or comments. Of course, it's not limited to this short period of time. We're always open to that. That's why we posted it on the web.
Anybody in the audience have any questions about the Code of Conduct? Anybody on the board? I do have one comment. I think one of the things we should stress when school starts is that, probably more than ever, off-campus activities are being looked at as far as whether they have an impact on the educational process, so any sort of harassment or anything that's taken off-campus. I think the students really need to be made aware of that, because, you know, in the past, people just kind of figured, oh, that was outside of the school day, that was off-campus, therefore, you know, none of the school's business. And I think, you know, it's more of an emphasis on that than ever before, especially, you know, with the rise of the social media and everything. It's, you know, kids just... They don't think twice about the activities that they perform and those kind of websites, so I think an emphasis needs to be made. I know we do it on computer usage policies, but I think that more is emphasizing on-school usage of the computers. So I think, you know, we need to really make sure that everybody's aware that any sort of harassment or anything that's taking place off-campus that's going to have a negative impact during the school day, they really could get in trouble for that as well.
As you know, those statements that you just made are found in this Code of Conduct, that there is a direct connection, especially, you know, if it obviously carries to the school, there's a nexus and so forth. That's clearly spelled out. All kinds of different social media, you know, whatever those things are, you know, I'm building a wall, but it's not with bricks, you know, or kids' names on it, you know, make the document count. I mean, those kinds of things are very problematic, because kids don't think, you know, and think it through, the ramifications, not only, you know, in days past, you know, one-on-one kind of verbal harassment. Now, it's, you know, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and the entire world can participate. So that's very well... That's spelled out here. The other part that I failed to mention is then a student-friendly version of the document. You know, in some schools, they're already completed, you know. It's a reproduction of this, but in kid language, so that it's appropriate for the different age levels. And that then will be the document that is used when we do our assembly programs, when kids come back to school and go over point by point, and especially focusing, you know, on this, you know, this social media outlets and cyberbullying, whatever you want to call it. That will be addressed.
Thank you, Dr. Seveding, for your fine work. Just a note, there's going to be some new legislation, just what we need, right? About cyberbullying, and we'll be hearing about that soon. I think that's going to be in this session before we close the session, and all of that. So it'll be interesting. Thank you very much. If there are no questions, I guess we can close the hearing and move on. Great work.
Thank you. One more comment. I just want to give you an update on the high school graduation. As you well know, we are at Dutch Stadium. We are at 10 o'clock in the morning, and apparently Anne Marie told me the weather forecast, so I'm counting on her, that the weather will be perfect in the morning. And they're also talking about legislation. There was a reauthorization by the state legislature on what is called Operation Recognition, and I would like you to be aware of this. That was... It was rescinded prior to July 2011. It was recently reinstated in May of this year. And what that law, simply, it is a law, that said that any veteran whose high school education was interrupted, and they went to serve in the following three conflicts, World War II, the Korean War, and also the Vietnam War. If their high school education was interrupted, they have the right to prove that their service record and requirements, honorable discharge and all that, they could go to any high school in New York State and request that they be given a high school diploma. So I've been working with Castle Point and Montrose to tell them that there is such a program, and they have four veterans who would like to get a high school diploma with the Beacon Class of 2012. So how great is that? So they're going to be coming as we march in. We're going to march... Actually, two are veterans from World War II, so they're well into their 90s, and two are veterans from the Vietnam War. So they're going to be there with... They're bringing a color guard, and they'll march in first, I mean, after we go up, and then the veterans, and then the Class of 2012. And, you know, they'll be seated to the left, because they can't stay out, you know, in the sun for that length of time. And so we'll do the recognition first and grant them a high school diploma, because they never were able to get one. All right? So I just want to make you...
Sounds really good.
That's the best. And thanks again for your follow-up to on that. That's absolutely terrific. Glad you're here. Thank you.
May I have a motion for the proposed executive session?
Motion to adjourn to executive session to review the employment history of a particular person, or the board will return as soon as possible. Second?
Comments, questions? All is in favor? Opposed? Okay. We'll be back as soon as we can.